So we are live, everyone, just so that you know. Welcome, everybody. This is the Scarborough Town Council's workshop. It is on Running Hill Road, and more specifically, it is on infrastructure development to support Running Hill Road and the development. And I do, just as apparently before I turn it over to the manager, having been here for as long as I have, is that this issue of bringing water and septic across the main turnpike into that area has been part of the comprehensive plan for nearly 20 years at least that I can recall. So it's a nice timing for us to begin this project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom and staff.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I should mention at the top of the show that calling this Running Hill Road may be a bit of a misnomer of that. General, that area of town has generally been referred to as Running Hill. In fact, the zoning that has been changed fairly recently in the last, well, during my tenure here, there is the name Running Hill. So but keep in mind, the area actually includes None Such Golf, it's kind of the area north of 95, including the golf course, up and over the hill. So it's a fair amount of property. I remember this rezoning quite well because the first meeting I attended when taking the job was the second and final reading of the zone change. And judging from the capacity crowd in the room, it was, I don't say controversial, but there was a lot of interest, a lot of involvement. I think it was a lengthy process. But all of that is rooted in the comprehensive plan. And so the zoning was changed in 2008, and essentially it adopted a mixed-use sort of development, all of which predicated on public sewer. And so consequently, in the intervening years, we've not seen anything, although there's been a number of projects talked about. And Mr. Grandin is here tonight. He has about 90 acres in his ownership.
Yes, 90 that I own, and another 40 at the top of Running Hill Road that I just purchased.
Okay, good. So Mr. Grandin is really the majority landowner there and has land that comes all the way down to Gorham Road. And staff has been working with him as consultants for a number of years. And frankly, he's been extremely patient, and we wanted to bring the matter to the council this evening. There's a fair amount of history that we're pleased to kind of walk you through. And we'd also like to give Ken and his consultant an opportunity to talk about his development plans. And the real key question that is before us is what level of public involvement, if any, does the town have in sewer extension? And how might we forge this private-public partnership? And I should mention, the public sewer component, the prior council in fiscal year 2010, through its CIP budget, did approve $1.45 million for sewer extension, with the caveat that we would not do that until it was a sufficient project to justify that sort of extent. And that's, so that's kind of the threshold of question that confronts us right now. So that's really a quick overview of what brings us together. Karen, do you have anything else to fill in by way of?
Sure, I could fill in quite a bit about it, actually. It's been a while. I've owned the land personally for about two years. My former company, RJ Grandin, and I owned it for about almost 10 years before that. When I left the company, I took that piece of land with me, and, you know, I was really looking forward to developing. I had been project manager on the earlier work done there, was real familiar with the project and the potential problems to solve, the wetlands and bernal pools and things like that, that I did for a living when I worked at Grandin. I was project manager of the Larrabee Wetlands Complex, and really enjoyed working in that type of field and recognized potential and the beauty of this piece of property. So, you know, I've been going through this, the early planning stages and got quite a lot done with Army Corps and DOT, MDEP. And Steve's got a lot done with that as well. My project that I'm proposing is Phase One is a, there's 11 duplexes on the first phase that are directly across from None Such Golf. And they're higher-end duplexes that really nice finishes and things like that. They're going to start at the $312,000 range. And it's basically a 55 and over community that I think is a nice fit for the area with the golf courses and all the amenities around. It's also a good thing, I think, for the town for the most part, as far as the tax burden being considerably less with schools and things like that. The sewer, though, is one thing that's really been a stickler over the past 10 years or so with our property, as well as the adjacent property that I'd recently acquired. The owners of that project and I were really close, and I basically would show the land to developers and builders and commercial users. And they all love the visibility, that it's a beautiful land on top of the hill, but it always comes down to sewer. They, you know, they just say, we can't wait, you know? Most of those people want to be in the ground in six months or something, and, you know, they hate to wait for sewer. My project that I'm starting is, I think, good because I can phase in sewer. And I just want to clarify one comment, too. It's sewer-only is coming across the, under the turnpike. There's a 16-inch ductile water main in Running Hill Road and 812 and Gorham Road. So, you know, I can phase my sewer in as I need it. But in order to provide some kind of a catalyst to the upper Running Hill Road property, it's almost that sewer needs to be done sooner toward that area, to service that area, which is roughly 4,000 feet or something like that further up the hill. So all I need to do for my project is to phase it, and, you know, I'll bring the sewer up the hill with the additional phases as I go. But in that four-year phase, phase time, you know, there could be people that come and go, that commercial users that are very valuable. We had one a few months ago that they went, but, you know, they still, they still might build something. They're still very interested in the property. So I think it's important to serve that upper area with sewer fairly soon.
Yeah, and just to put some finer numbers to it, the town did commission a study to look at a number of routes. Possible routes to get sewer under 95 and how to test, you know, where to bring it over, which cheapest and so on and so forth. And Ken Grandin has been integral in those conversations. We have identified a preferred alignment, if you will. And the cost associated with simply getting it on the other side of the turnpike, I don't know if I can put my numbers, is about $2.8 million.
Do we have those documents?
Yeah, this is provided in the unit, in the packet.
Yeah, we've got another one.
I can distribute some without.
I'm not in the real estate department, but is 312,000 affordable for a senior?
It could be. It depends on the household.
Market rate.
It's not intended to be affordable, but it.
Well, now, because that's what the need is in Scarborough, I'm asking, I don't know, you know, what. I don't, I don't know where it falls on that line, so I'm just curious. I just want to know, because I know we're going to get questions about it, so. I'm just curious. I'd like to know. Hope you already have that.
Yeah, I don't think we can answer that definitively. It's not intended to be an affordable project, and I suspect that's going to be probably at the upper limit of affordability, is my hunch.
Can you tell us what the history of public versus private installment, payment and installation of sewer in the town of Scarborough has been?
I'm not aware of any other, any public-private partnership.
I don't mean partnership. I mean, who pays for the sewer that runs out to Higgins Beach or Pine Point? Who paid for it?
Sanitary district. Well, actually, private money, private development has, and the infrastructure then in turn turns over to the district to own and manage and maintain over time. So it's private money that has essentially built out, but for Higgin's Parkway. That was the one area where the town, well, 15 years ago, decided to go ahead and install not just sewer, but all sorts of other infrastructure and ready that area for development. And in an effort to recoup our investment, we do have a district, TIF district in place, and there are sewer assessments assigned to those properties.
But generally speaking, the sanitary district says yes to the project. And then there is a funding mechanism between their funds that they already have, maybe to get it started, as well as TIF money, as well as fees, as well as then increases in any type of sewerage.
I guess I'm wondering why, why would we be looking at town funding if it's a sewer district project?
Well, again, I'm not aware that the sewer district ever puts public, their monies into a deal.
Their, their general policy is that private development pays for that extension, you know? And it's usually done as part of the site plan approval and other types of things they're paying for their.
So what is different here?
The, I think the thing that's, that's different here is that we always look at where there may be some extraordinary costs, that perhaps there is a public benefit to helping out, you know, to extend something like sewer service, which is extremely expensive as we're going under the turnpike. So I can't speak to the discussions in 2010, but I believe what was thought of is, okay, well, if the town can finance or pay for just bringing the sewer to west of the turnpike, then that would prime the pump, if you will, for other development to happen. And so one developer or a series of developers didn't really wind up paying what are essentially some pretty hefty costs.
One, one quick comment that I think will kind of get your attention or realize that it's really worthwhile considering this sewer extension is our project on the 89, pay-per-parcel only, the projections of total build-out is over $70 million. And it's a 55 and over plus mixed use, so, you know, low burden on town services and things like that. But not only that, we, we hit that big service area at the top of the hill. There's 60 to 100 acres of more commercial land at the top of Running Hill that when sewer is provided to that area, that will provide a catalyst for commercial growth.
So I have two primary concerns, okay? The first one is if there's a connector that goes through there, that was one of the issues we talked about, was the fact that there's some open land right there, and that could be the prime route for any future, it's an option, let's put it that way. We, one of the discussions was, if there's a lot of development back there, are we going to end up driving the cost of this project? The, the potential cost of a highway extension, because now we've got to displace commercial entities or other developments there. So I would like to look at and see what those options are. I know we don't have routes yet. We don't have any of that information. I'm fully aware of that. I've also heard the proposal of coming in from the Gorham side and let development kind of come south that way and feed down through, through that direction. So I'd really want to see, I'd be curious to know what the cost would be to run this under the turnpike. And is there a way we could work with them as they redo the exit 45, is it the main mall one? I think that they're talking with whatever it is. Could we, could we find a way to piggyback with that project, let's say, if that's a more viable alternative? And there was a lot there, sorry.
Right, right. So I, I think there's some incredible relationship between trying to open up this area and the potential turnpike spur. In some cases, you know, Mr. Grandin, we've certainly been working toward a particular investment, a company that's been looking to locate for a while. And it's one of the things that we were trying to attract them with, we're saying, you've got the Running Hill Road area, and you've got this potential turnpike spur that depending on, you know, where it happens, it could very much benefit some properties along this area. So it's absolutely relative, it's definitely relevant to this discussion. Again, I think it can spur a lot of potential development as well. See, we've got the.
Coming from Gorham, the Gorham side.
Coming from Gorham. So coming up from, that's really what we're talking about, is coming under the turnpike toward, at the lower part of his property. So that's where the 2.8 million is coming from, going under the highway there. And then we're really, there's another $600,000 that would go from the turnpike to really Gorham, Gorham Road, and to the front of his property. And then, you know, this is the, this is another crucial point of, in order to open up the top part of this land, the Running Hill Road area, we definitely need that connection that goes through Mr. Grandin's property. And that is another.
Million.
Million, 1.4, something in there. So that, you know, it is a pretty hefty, hefty lift with respect to this piece. The other thing I want to just mention is, we certainly looked at, you know, is a TIF the right mechanism for doing this? And I, we do have to say at this point, a TIF has to have a commercial component. So that financing technique is not really available to us at this point. I think it might be helpful if you perhaps could walk them through what this project could look like, because they've been trying to evaluate whether or not there's a need. But I know Peter was, I want to get to a question for Peter.
And I guess that was kind of the question. So the number that you have at the very end of that paragraph is 4.5 million to do this.
That's right. To get it all the way through.
Yeah, and actually, coming back, if we haven't done this for any other development in Scarborough, why would this be, why would we set precedent to do it this time? And the second problem that I have, or not problem, or concern, is as we take a look at the 40 or 50 million dollars, we've got earmarked already for municipal investments, public safety building being number one, the libraries being queued up. You know, monies, and we're getting a lot of pushback this year by the level of debt the town has. I need to be convinced, a compelling business case, why this is, because it sounds like you want this done soon. And so we've got a lot of competing needs for the capital that we have.
Absolutely.
Five million, four and a half million dollars, and there's always going to be creep. You know, I just, for something we haven't done before, and what's going to happen to the next lot of land that wants to be developed? I have some real concerns about why this, it gets to your point, Chris, why is this so different? And that's a serious chunk of change. My tax revenue that comes in per year alone will pay 1.1 million dollars, maybe almost 1.2 per year. Not off 11 units at all. Pardon? Not off 11 units in Phase One. When on total build-out. Right, that's downward, so. Short term, we have a short-term financial management issue we're going to deal with.
And I think, right, and I think that's why we're particularly sensitive, because we know that we did the investment in Higgin's Parkway, and that's back to what's the, what's the trigger, what's the threshold that we would need in order to even invest the 1.4 million that was set aside in the CIP?
Just to go further, just on this point, you know, we're here before you're not necessarily advocating for this. We've, I think with Karen and I came to the town, these sorts of decisions had been made in terms of, through the comprehensive plan. The zoning that was put in place very clearly requires public sewer. And the fact that a prior council threw some money at this, not enough apparently, I think is a indication or a recognition that there is a bit of a unique situation. And in my mind, that unique situation is getting it on the other side of the turnpike. Where it goes from there, who pays for it, I think is a, is a parallel conversation, but a different one. It's kind of the but for issue. This land would develop, would develop but for the fact that sewer doesn't exist on that side of the turnpike.
So I can ask a question. So have we looked at, I mean, this is if we went under the turnpike and went across. But have we looked at coming down from South Portland? I mean, near Spring Street has got to have sewer to come down from.
There are options from Westport and South Portland. Apparently, those are more expensive. There's ledger shoes and distance.
So perhaps it would be helpful to look at the, sort of, just an overview of the project, quickly.
I think it would help the council have a better idea of what the area we're talking, talking about. My name's Steve Harding, I work in the surveying attendings, and working with Ken. My name's Steve Harding, I'm working with Ken for a couple of years now on this project that Ken's calling Oak ledge at Running Hill. Just to get you oriented, I'm sure, I'm going to have lights on, Tom, thank you. This is, this is the turnpike here, we've got the spur going over to two ninety-five. Running Hill would be up here, Gorm Road is down here. Ken's eighty-nine acre parcel, which is the one we've been looking at developing, is right here and then there's an adjoining forty acre parcel here that connects to Running Hill Road. Next slide, depicts what we've shown for development.
Can I, sorry, can I get a reference, can you go back? So, I mean, it seems like, I mean, that's target right there, there's got to be a sewer there, it looks like your much posts are coming just down from the north as you go up.
This is, this is Sam's club.
If you go up to the intersection of Running Hill and coming, right there?
Yep.
Yeah, so coming down to the red parcel there, I mean, that...
In my understanding and talking to Dan Bacon, previous planner, there was a study or there was analysis done of bringing the sewer that way and either ending up in Westport or, or South Portland, I'm not sure, I believe it was Westport. But there were some prohibitive cost factors in there, either the capacity of the plant or getting there was a problem. So I, I don't know the history of that.
I'll point that out.
But I know that that conversation that Dan had mentioned...
The issue of ledge.
Wasn't a feasible alternative or was a more costly alternative.
Sorry, sorry.
Anybody else has any questions, I'll anyway certainly interject. This is the, the plan that, that can count as for the eighty-nine acre development. Gorm Road is right here, this is red, Red Brook. And up here is Running Hill. The green and the brown represents the eighty-nine acre parcel that we have. This is the Running Hill parcel. We actually brought this through to the planning board in a master plan concept under the plan unit development approach, which encourages dense development. We were told that we needed to secure this area here as, to make sure that we had the connection to Running Hill or traffic. And in this case, sewer would be a key component of that. We also needed to do a little bit more regulatory work with the fertile pools as well.
Sure. Where do you stand right now in your permitting?
We have done all the wetlands mapping and fertile pool mapping, we have some fertile pools here. We have talked to the DEP, this first phase, which is twenty-two, excuse me, eleven duplexes for twenty-two units. We wouldn't need any Army Corps permit because we wouldn't be affecting any wetlands. This pump station here, which would be, end up being a sanitary district.
What's that we work, that's running through the front, sorry? It looks like you've got a little river there.
Red Brook is Red Brook.
That's Red Brook?
Correct.
Isn't that one, is that one of our preserved watersheds?
There are certain parameters we'll have to do and it will be, there will be monies paid to fund to develop within that and the DEP would look at that. So we met with the DEP, we don't have any fertile pool issues with the DEP, we don't have any, we have a significant fertile pool, but it's further enough in the development, it's not a factor. So we feel very comfortable going forward, this will be a stormwater permit, this will be a site law permit. We've met with the Army Corps, they have a little bit more jurisdiction on the fertile pools. We've met several times with Jay Clement with the Army Corps. We believe we have a plan that we have in place that would be acceptable to him. So, you know, we've, we've actually talked about coming forward to the planning board without the sewer and it just didn't seem to make sense. We've gotten some, some pushback, I'll call it, from the town not to, not to do that because, you know, we need to solve.
Just to be clear, you, he could not do even the duplexes, and I checked in with Jay just to make sure, just because of the density allowed and, and other things, without sewer, he would not be able to build.
That's, I guess my, a better question is, is sewer the only thing that's left, is that the only hurdle you have left on this project or do you have other permitting issues that, that need to be addressed?
At some point, probably kick into a traffic permit, so we'd have to address those issues, which is similar to any other large development. But there's no, there's nothing in this development that's a showstopper.
Steve, one quick comment, that, no, you can't really read it, but the right half of that screen on the eighty-nine acre parcel is mixed use and, and residential is shown conceptually, but there'll, there'll most likely be more commercial in that area. It's basically with, with this kind of phasing, it allows us to change the commercial concentration and residential and have a mixed use area in the middle.
What Ken's getting at, we've shown two hundred and thirty-seven units in this area. We could, you know, with this parcel here, there may be a potential for, you know, sharing some land there. As, as time goes on, Ken talks to people and maybe, you know, offices or some other commercial development that happens here. And, you know, this zone in the middle can be more of a mixed use where you have either a gym or a store or a restaurant or something that supports it.
And that's, that's a development.
That's the RH2 zone, is that, I mean, that type of density?
This property is split between RH and RH2?
And that density is allowing, yes.
And this parcel in yellow is really suited well for commercial.
We had a, we just lost a really good commercial user that was interested in the right half of that, the entire forty acre parcel and twenty-five acres of the eighty-nine acre parcel that had moved to Portland. We were pretty far along with some negotiations on that one. And sewer was one of the things, the deciding factors.
So did I hear you say that a master plan has been submitted to the planning board?
Yeah, we have this approved, it has lapsed now, Jay, or?
So the board, as I, let's call it, it's been a few years of business. So our plan development review process has three steps. The first is sort of a site inventory step where you really look at the natural and built environment and sort of identifying areas for development. And the board worked their way through that. I believe we were working our way through a master plan, I can't remember if a master plan was actually approved, I think, I think there was still pending findings on the fertile pools and some other things. So that's really where it's at still with the board, is the master plan process. And then once the master plan is approved, which generally conceptually shows the layout, then they dive more deeply into the subdivision site plan standards where they really drill into the traffic, stormwater, lighting, landscaping, all those real details. So it's, it's a multi-phase approach. So we're really, they've been through the first steps and that's where it's ended. It's been a few years at this point.
So at what stage is the mixed use commercial piece required or guaranteed or stated and accepted?
That's, that was one of the open, that was one of the open questions, was really around, you know, understanding the, the mix of uses that are being proposed and how to control sort of the requirements and when those come in. So we, that was, that's still an open question.
Okay.
You've now acquired the, the other property that connects you to Running Hill Road. So what are the plans, are you going to include this, you know, into the residential development piece? Are you holding that separate? Are you going to?
I'm holding it separate. I prefer to use commercial because it's in the town's best interest to be able to capitalize on a TIF if there's a certain concentration of commercial development. And I understand that and I want to do what I can to promote commercials on that end of the project.
And I think, getting back to Jay's point, one of the open issues here, we had, we didn't have this under control, this section of the roadway, which the planning board felt was key for the traffic and the sewer, so it was one of the items that we needed to nail down.
So either to staff, as part of the plan, do, does the plan do a full phase of estimated valuation and assign what is associated with residential versus what is associated with the commercial piece?
At this...
Because to me, it seems like the analysis is because the commercial component is what should drive the conversation around the infrastructure investment because it's required in order to do a TIF. So to me, it's a correlation between the, well, either one point, I've heard three numbers, I heard one point four, I've heard two point eight and then four point five. So whatever the number is to bring it across should be compared against what is the commercial value that this project is bringing to offset it, correct?
Well, at this point, the project's shown as, as residential only. What Mr. Grandin just said, that there's the potential as market conditions change and the project builds out, it could go mixed use. But I understand your line point, how do we have the confidence upfront to do the financial modeling as to what the expected tax revenue is?
Nothing against Mr. Grandin, but what if you get through this process and all of a sudden, you know what, I can't get anybody in here coming in as a commercial and one hundred percent of it's residential to me?
Just like that is another I guess.
Well, and the other point is that density of residential requires sewer too. He couldn't do that.
Oh, I understand that.
And just a point of clarity about what the planning board does, the planning board has, you know, they, they review the ordinance and the ordinance doesn't talk about sort of tax base and financial, you know, sort of...
Exactly.
So I just wanted to be clear that when the planning board looked at this, they're just looking, do you have sewer capacity, yes or no? You know, the, the value question is really, fits with you all.
With this density, I, I feel that commercial gives, gives more bang for the buck. With, with a big, for instance, multi-office building, there's so many parking lots and things associated with that, that, another good example, where my property is, there's a large area of wetlands and fertile pools, so that's roughly forty acres, I think, or so that I'm not utilizing. So basically, I'm doing that kind of buildout and bringing in upon final buildout, like you brought up, one point two million dollars almost on fifty acres. Well, the other people we were looking at with this forty acre users, they had a really, really large office building and it was valued at potentially a hundred and fifty million dollars or something like that. So, you know, they were, they were roughly twice as much, but they had big parking lots that ate up all of that property. So with the dense, density that residential allows, it's, I feel that it makes more money for, for the town, this is our tax revenue.
I'm getting, I'm struggling, can maybe you can help me, I mean, I understand a prior council set some money aside, so let's that, leave that off the table for a second. I'm assuming that's in a reserve someplace, Tom?
No, it's just been approved and budgeted, it's not bonded, it doesn't, was not moved forward at all with it.
Okay. So, but just setting that aside, I'm still struggling with the compelling business case why there's development all over Scarborough. We haven't paid for sewer through the prior conversations. This is a pretty heavy lift, as you suggested. Why are we making the case or make the case for us why this becomes a town responsibility to put the sewer in to enable the develop? Why isn't it the developers' cost to make? Why, and my problem becomes if we do it here, the next development that comes along, how do we have a clear way of saying, we're not going to do sewer? I, I really spend a given where we are financially and the projects we've got on the table, I just, I don't understand how this is different than other things. So that's, I need that compelling case.
I think the policy decision was made in your complex, it was a recognition by the community, not by the landowners, that we wanted mixed use development in this area. And what comes with that is that sewer is essential for that to happen. So I think it was a bit of a policy recognition first and foremost.
I don't think the question is the policy, I think the question is who pays for the policy.
Exactly.
That's the real issue here. I don't think anybody's arguing that that's, it's, it's a positive thing to develop that area. The real question I think we're struggling with is, is it, what's an equitable way to fund that? And, and how do we, you know, if it is a public-private partnership, and I'm not saying that we, we don't look at those, but we, we need, to Peter's point, I think we need to have a pretty good business case for that.
I was going to say, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, well, I agree with the points that are on the table in part. It's also hard for me, I mean, justifying this to the residents of this town while we're going through a really lean budget cycle and next year is going to be even harder, budget, putting, getting this paid for and justifying it to me is going to be a difficult thing. And yeah, we need, we need a mixed use area, but I can, I can tell you I'd be a lot more supportive of it if it was a project that I was going to be able to tell my, the seniors in this town that they were going to be able to afford to move there. That's a real need. And it's so, it's hard, I'm sitting here thinking, I don't, we've got projects going on all over town, I don't know if I, if I need, we need this right now for that investment. And nothing against you, sir, I mean, I, I think it would be a wonderful thing, but right now, I mean, we have to start living in the right now, what do we need right now? Everybody just seems to have a lot of I-wants and it's like, when do we put the stop and slow down and realize that? I just, I don't know, I, I'm really bothered by the whole thing.
Well, it's one of the reasons why we wanted to come today because I think we've been trying to articulate that, you know, at the most we had one point four million budgeted and as, as Councilor Hayes pointed out, that doesn't even get us under the turnpike at that point, which was the original theory of making that, that investment, to take it so far and let the future development take its, take its course because we made that investment. But the reality is the one point four million doesn't do that. And so we have both a one point four million dollar gap, if you will, just getting on the turnpike, not to mention then another six hundred thousand to get it to Mr. Grandin's property, which is definitely, we would have, in a normal process, he would be doing that. And then it's that period of time, however long his development would take to build out, to bring the sewer from Gorm Road up through Running Hill Road. And that part is also not a challenge, but it's certainly a question because that's where we really got a lot of bang for the buck is getting it up there. But, and that may be helpful, at least talking about what your buildout scenario might be. You know, I think you had talked about a four or five year and I'm just trying to, want to check in.
It's four now.
Okay. Can you?
One thing, I will, Steve's got a slide that can talk about the phasing too. One thing that I think you've got to recognize and every town, every location has its pluses and minuses. We've got a quarry in Wyndham that we're phasing out and doing an industrial park. One big negative thing is that it needs a traffic light, you know, and some, like Saco is close to the highways and they've got, they have pluses that, you know, Saco sells good, it's close to the highway and, you know, we're far from the highway in Wyndham, that's a handicap. Just recognizing that, for instance, that traffic signal is, is one thing that a relatively short amount of money could be spent on to promote, well, economic development. And I've had this discussion with the state on this and the town, the town and I both, you know, if they could, if they were going to help one town, you know, that's to, to recognize that handicap and help one town that needs economic growth, then those are the kind of things that people have to do. And to, if sewer isn't brought up to that point, you know, it's never going to be commercial, there's never going to be any significant growth up there. I've, I've done a lot of legwork in the last few years and I've got easements from Bollis, you know, I've talked to the turnpike, I've done a lot of legwork for this to provide the corridor for that, for this sewer extension. And coincidentally, Wood and Kern's study that the town spent quite a deal of money on to look at this sewer, their, their favorite option is the one that I chose from before, you know? So we, we were parallel thinking without even knowing it, you know, my, my course and theirs were one and the same when they did their own study.
I think my, my, I don't, I'm not questioning the validity of the project, I'm not questioning the corridor, I'm not questioning the need for it. My question is if this is going to come, is why now? I mean, you know, what, what is the motivating factor for us to do this this year, next year, the year after versus allowing that buildout to happen naturally, whether it's through the, the new connector that's going in or natural growth coming in from the north or from the, you know, from the South Portland side? I guess that would be my question, is what's the, what's the critical path right now that causes this to be the number one project for us and not allowing development just to kind of naturally pace itself up?
I mean, the reason we're referring to you is that he's got a viable project, he's got a project he's ready to move forward with now. That's, that's what triggers the conversation.
Well, it's not viable if there's no sewer and...
If that is, if it's zoned for a density that requires sewer, then it's improperly zoned. And it's a chicken or the egg. We're not going to get any activity out there if it doesn't have sewer.
Right.
So nothing's going to happen out there, there'll be a little... There'll be little spots here and there, but they're all going to be based on sector systems. And large acreage space, so none of which is going to move the needle for us economically.
True.
And single-family residential will never move the needle for us in terms of tax base.
Right, and I understand, I mean, I understand from the developer's standpoint of now is always the time. And I understand that completely. If, you know, there's resources that need to go in, it has to happen now. But to the case point, we've got development going all over Scarborough. We've got stuff happening all over the place. And I guess I would, you know, in a situation like Higas, it's twofold. I would not want us to be sitting in another position again, 10, 15 years from now where we've invested in this infrastructure, like we rolled the dice with Higas. And we're sitting here now with all this infrastructure debt on our plate and no development to show for. And so, you know, I guess, you know, Higas was, I think, an exception that we were looking at, because we really needed that stimulus right then, right now. And we still haven't seen the full benefits of that yet. We're still hoping that that's going to be the catalyst that we need to fully develop that area. So that's why I'm asking you, why, why right now? You know, what is the motivating factor right now to make this investment? Is, you know, if the property's going to sit there for 15 or 20 years and not move, I'm not sure that anybody can see that far out, based on the new developments that we have with the potential spur going in and other development opportunities that aren't going to say that that area's going to naturally build out on its own anyway, as the other development projects move forward, as the other infrastructure projects move forward. I don't know that. I mean, I don't expect anybody to really understand that at this point.
We looked at, like I said earlier, over the last 10 years, we've seen so many big users come and go. The IDEX was one. They, we walked out and landed extensively. And then, you know, you get talking about sewer and, you know, how quick can you be in the ground? And they decided to stay put where they were. You know, there's many other users that came and left because of sewer not being there. So, you know, in 2009, Scarborough Athletic Club, the people that owned the 40-acre facility were going to build a significant athletic club with tennis courts and gymnasiums. And, you know, it was a $50 to $75 million project, which was, would have been good on the top of the hill there and done well, served the community very nicely. But they left too. So I think in 2009, when they were here, that's when the talks about sewer came along with Scarborough Athletic Club.
And I think if something like that were to come in as well, that might be a catalyst for us to say, maybe that is another viable reason to look at that area and put a little bit more emphasis behind it. I mean, I just, and again, I'm not questioning the design of your project or the validity of your project, but for more housing units, you know, we're always looking for stock diversification, of course, and housing diversification. I don't think we're, you know, right now, we've got a lot of stuff in the pipeline that we're still kind of waiting to see catch up. So, you know, that's where I am on it. You know, it's a house, which is not, I'm not questioning it's not a good project. I'm just saying, there's not, there's nothing really compelling or unique in this particular instance that tells me, you know what, this is really something that we've got to push right now, other than the potential future outlook. You get what I'm saying? If it were, if it were something like, look, we've got Scarborough Athletic in here, they're going to build a $50 million facility privately and they just need the sewer to come in, that might be something for us to really consider.
And the other towns are pretty progressive in economic development and promoting that and being forward-thinking to realize the handicaps that different areas of their town has. So I think that you're going to, you're going to.
Honestly, I've got to think in, why is it? I mean, I'm sure you run the performing models and other things. And if it's going to be $70 or $80 million worth of build-out, that can't be, the cost of the sewer can't be amortized into your costs and amortized to your potential. I mean, why is it the town's responsibility to build the sewer? That's the piece that I'm.
My use fits in the zone in the mixed-use area. I started in 2009 developing that property, to, maybe it was 2006, when the mixed-use zone and it got rezoned to allow the town to do that thing. We lost a year of what we were going to be doing with this.
Yeah, that doesn't really answer my question. I mean, are you saying that?
I'm working on it.
Are you saying that the cost, unless the sewer gets built for you, that the project's not viable?
When we were partnering with Scarborough Athletic Club, the sewer discussion getting extended by the town to that site came up. And that's how it all came along. Does that answer your question?
No.
But they're not at the table anymore, right?
Right.
What was your question again?
Is the project viable?
Why is, yeah.
Why is the project not viable?
Can't you extend the sewer or just amortize it into the cost of your project of an $80 million project build-out? It's not that big of a number.
I'm providing, every number is big.
Well, here's our reality, okay? I mean, where we are is, if we haven't got it reserved, which is what I heard, we've had a, you know, next year, we're looking at a really tough budget cycle. I mean, we're probably talking about really tough, tough choices about things we're going to do. And for us to ask for $2 million or so for this project to be funded in next year's budget cycle is a real tough one.
I think it's already been decided on.
No, it hasn't.
The $1.4 million is in a CIP, but it hasn't been.
It's not real, it's not.
Yes, exactly.
It's not sitting in a bank, you know, just saving the hell up.
Tax collectors will pay it.
Exactly, exactly.
It's one of our exceptions to the, I believe that's how I vote.
I'm sorry, I can't hear that down there. What was that?
To the vote, the, so we have the bond approval by the voter approval.
I voted for this as a qualified exclusion. That was the interpretation at the time.
But I think, just to make it clear though, so while the prior council voted and approved $1.4 million to this project, there is a second approval required of the council, which is to actually fund, how to fund the actual allocation, whether it's by bond or assessment or whatever it might be. So it's not a 100% done deal, because it can still be rejected.
No, we don't need to wait the next budget cycle. If this council wanted to move forward, you could choose to.
Correct.
And I think that's really why we wanted to give Mr. Grandin the chance to talk with you, not to necessarily review his project per se, but to say, you know, here's the value of it. And he's waiting for us to make, you know, a decision. And we simply are not prepared to move forward without understanding what we think the real trigger would be. Is it, you know, how much investment do we really need to have in order to give us some security that we can recoup our investments? You know, for the very reason, Higas Parkway that we have, you know, we made some bold moves out there and it hasn't, it has not yielded the type of return that we've talked about. So, you know, I understand the council being very sensitive toward that to get in the same situation for, you know, another area of town. And again, we're trying to get a sense of what is that trigger? What's, you know, we don't have that answer right now.
The difference is the Parkway Specular, this has, the real proposition is, this is a 237 residential subdivision, estimated value of $70 million. Is that enough to give us confidence or not?
Well, I think, but I think the big trigger is us having to explain to the taxpayers how we're going to spend $2 million to add more units, more housing units in this town, when we already know that we have people in town that are furious over the fact that we're building out more units and they believe that the town can't handle any more housing units. We're, like I said before, we already had a lean budget. So it's really, it's difficult to sit here and, I mean, we all love housing, it's great, it's wonderful. We want to support contractors, but we also have to make sure that we can sustain our town and sustain the people that are living in it and sustain their taxes. And adding $2 million on top of what we don't already have is really hard for me to even comprehend. And for the record, I think we actually are a very forward-thinking council.
So what, I guess the question I would have probably more for Chair, what action items are we looking at coming out of here? Is this, if this is just informal and educational, then, you know, continue with the presentation and we should give you the floor and let you, you know, finish out what you need to say and what you want to say. You know, I don't think we need to debate it, I think we just need to listen.
Yeah, so from a Chair's perspective, this is purely informative to see where we've been in the past, where we are today in regards to the conference of plan, and then to listen to the proposal or listen to the project. And then, you know, staff can take that information and try to determine what is the next best step to either come back to us with a proposal or not to. I would personally just wait and see. As far as the trigger, and everyone has a different perspective, so I'm using a personal perspective here. The issue about housing density, housing concentration, the types of housing, the mixed-use piece, is purely a planning board decision, because this is not a contract zone. So it has to be based upon the zones that we currently allow and the definitions and that type of thesis. This is strictly about whether or not the town pays to bring sewer across the turnpike and up to that particular point and what the advantage is to that. For me personally, the trigger point is that what is the complete phase-out in which we start realizing the mixed-use and commercial piece of that? Because that is the qualifier in which we use the TIF. If we're not going to see it, then to me, I don't know if I'm necessarily inclined to be in favor of a residential TIF for residential properties. We've never used that before in the town.
We can't, it's not even allowed.
Right, and so I don't want to, I mean, there's always been kind of a borderline with some projects. You know, so whether there's 237 units or whether there's five, it doesn't matter to me the number of units, because it all has to apply to the permit control, the number of permits available, planning board will control what is allowed in there. It's really about the phase-out and where is the mixed-use and where do we then see the return on that investment?
Well, the impact analysis, I mean, the.
Right, I need to see that impact analysis.
It's a 55-plus, arguably is somewhere.
Because I think that then answers Peter's question about why is it beneficial to the town? Because where do we realize the return in the taxes as a result of the investment?
Ken has been hearing these conversations from us for a year and a half. And frankly, we wanted him to, we want to broaden the conversation so he could hear, or we could hear it frankly.
I guess I'd like to know, so we talked about bringing sewer up to Running Hill Road and that actually opened up.
Can I just quickly go through? I just want to make a couple.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So I think the point that I'd like, that I'm asking about is, once we get up to Running Hill Road, what does that open up for us? I mean, if there's further development, it looks like it's barely tracked up up there.
Right, there's a, there's a significant amount of acreage that is, that opens up for larger office users, larger commercial users. And that's where the interest has been in terms of some potential $75 to $100,000 worth of users. That's what they're interested in. They like the view coming down. Certainly there's a, you know, with, and a few other buildings that are there, there's that sense that it could extend, extend up from some point.
Have you talked with those landowners to see if they'd be willing to partner and share the cost with you? Because they would have the advantage of doing that, right?
Those landowners predominantly are, there's holes on there or they're not a developer, so to speak. So I don't, I'm not sure that they're in a position to do that.
So with that, we have about a minute and a half. So I think this is a good first conversation. And, you know, if we can maybe sit on this information that we received and then I can take a poll from everyone else, whether or not we want to have a second workshop or what additional information or what might be needed or what direction, we can move forward from there. But thank you, Mr. Grandin, for coming. We do appreciate it. Thank you, Steve. With that, we'll adjourn to the regular meeting. I'm going to assume it's on, so welcome, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Scarborough Town Council for Wednesday, June 7, 2017, and we are calling to order. If you would join me and standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice
Roll call, please.
Counselor Donovan. Counselor Rowan. Counselor Foley. Counselor St. Clair. Counselor Hayes. Counselor Cauzzo.
And moving into general public comments, item number four. It's an opportunity for anybody in the public that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. You do have three minutes that you can speak at the podium, and if you could state your name and your address in Scarborough or where you're from, it would be greatly appreciated for the clerk.
I'm a little nervous. My name is Jessica Liddy. I reside at 501 Black Point Road. I am here on behalf of the Wentworth PTA. I am the president. We have an upcoming family movie night end-of-the-year event on the 16th, and we recently learned that we could have food trucks at our event, but we needed to pay for them, which we would gladly do if we had the funds to feed everyone that came, but we don't. So we didn't realize if we had our parents pay for the event or the food trucks, that we could no longer have the food trucks. Now, I know there's rules and laws. I'm here on behalf of all the kids and parents at the event to maybe get a one-time waiver, and if that's not possible, at least to kind of put out there a consideration for different booster-type events, that food trucks would be allowed to be paid for by our parents. I'm not sure what else you all need from me, but that was kind of it. I didn't know what we could do to get a waiver, if that was at all possible, if you would consider it. It's a nonprofit event. There'll be no funds raised other than for the school, and it's really a community event to be hosted at Wentworth.
Sure. So this is a public comment section, so there's really, this really isn't a dialogue.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting, or if you'd like to give me a call.
I would definitely do. We didn't know, we just wanted to put it out there. We knew this was the last kind of meeting before, and we just wanted to put the idea in your head to beg for mercy and say, at least consider it. But I will reach out and contact you tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're most welcome. Is there anybody else I would like to speak? Not seeing any. We'll close public comment. Moving on to item number five, minutes from the May 17, 2017 regular meeting.
They're not available.
Not available, so we'll table that until the next meeting. Any known items for adjustments to the agenda? So moving on to item seven, Treasurers' Warrants. I'll sign those as the evening goes by. And moving into order number 17-049, seven o'clock public hearing and schedule a second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 608, Town of Scarborough Fireworks Display Ordinance, Section 2, Definitions, Section 3, Regulations and Codes, Section 4, Permit Required, Section 5, Application Procedure, and Section 12, Consumer Fireworks, as presented by the Ordinance Committee. I'd like to open up the meeting for a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak?
Good evening, everybody. Of course, most of you know me. I'm Jeff Graham. I am the manager of Phantom Fireworks over in Scarborough. We know this ordinance is going through. I did read the other day in the paper that we are going to have to perform some sort of notification at our showrooms. I haven't been approached about this yet. What is exactly what we are going to have to do if this ordinance passes?
So again, this is not really a dialogue kind of conversation, but what I'll do is keep track of the questions, and the chair of the ordinance committee can address those as part of his presentation if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Anything else?
For now, that's it.
Great. Any other comments on the fireworks ordinance? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second. And I'd like to turn it over to the chairman of the ordinance committee for an overview.
This will be voted on at second reading in two weeks. Am I correct?
Yes.
The ordinance is intended to balance the interests of those who would like to be protected from fireworks nuisance, yet keeping it alive for those who enjoy fireworks around the Fourth of July and around the New Year's date. I fall into the latter category, but appreciate that there are many people, and we heard from many people, who felt that it needed to be more restrictive. And so the things, the fundamental elements of the change are that we're going to go from five days to four, dropping July the 5th. We're going to conclude the allowance of fireworks at 10:00 p.m. We are going to have a good neighbor or respect-your-neighbor policy that will require people who want to let off fireworks during those days to be proactive and respectful of their neighbors, check in to make sure that this isn't going to create an unreasonable burden, make the kind of adjustments that a good neighbor would make. We have included a provision that makes the owners of properties potentially liable, which came about as a result of the chief pointing out that it is quite difficult under the circumstances on, as you can imagine, July 3, July 4. The police department is out straight. Complaints are coming in, and having officers go out and try and identify who exactly it was, who was the offending party, is problematic. So we're trying to make homeowners be more accountable and more responsible. That question has raised the point about, well, gee, there's all sorts of circumstances under which a homeowner could be completely free of blame or responsibility. And I think the answer to that question is that the police and code enforcement are trained to use good judgment. And in almost every discretionary matter, they have to decide, is this appropriate to issue a ticket or not? We have qualitative standards which require the use of good judgment throughout our zoning ordinances. So this is something that they're all used to. As far as the question that the gentleman from Phantom Fireworks brought up, we have a requirement that the two fireworks, or any fireworks company in town retailer, will provide a notification to each, with each sale, that Scarborough has a notification process. And they can have that in any sort of little slip of paper that goes with the receipt, goes into the bag, and would simply say that there is a notification process required to set off fireworks legally in Scarborough. And the responsibility then passes to the person who has purchased them. Some people don't intend to let fireworks off in Scarborough, and they would obviously ignore that. But we are unique. Not a lot of towns allow this, and we have two fireworks companies right here in town, and so we, as an ordinance committee, felt it was appropriate to place that responsibility on the fireworks companies.
Yes. Counselor St. Clair.
Counselor Bayeby, I'm sorry. Counselor Donovan, is it okay to read that section, that notice section?
Yes, certainly. Go ahead.
So basically, this is the addition that the ordinance committee put on. Any authorized retailer for the sale of consumer fireworks in the Town of Scarborough shall provide written notice at the time of sale to all purchasers of consumer fireworks at their Scarborough retail stores that a permit is required for use in the Town of Scarborough as set forth, Section 5 above. Okay. And the only other thing I wanted to point out, this is something that we've been talking about for a long time, years, and none of this was done lately. In fact, Counselor Donovan totally put me to shame this year and really tackled this. I had been working on it for the two years prior to this, and he took it to another level and really involved the fire chief and the police department and the town manager. I think it's very well-written. I think it's very clear. We got rid of some things, we added some things. I think it addresses some of the concerns that we heard from residents. I think it protects a lot of residents and their homes, and I think it also holds people accountable if they do break the law. Some people don't want fireworks going off. I mean, I actually, I think I sent you all the email. Someone was lighting off fireworks last Friday night in my neighborhood, two neighborhoods down from us, two nights in a row. And the woman was frustrated, and I said, "I feel you," because it woke my four-year-old up. It was at 10 o'clock at night. It's frustrating. So there's a need for this ordinance, and I think that people need to understand that this actually, a couple of people have said, "Well, it's really, it's really strict and it's really firm." This actually isn't strict and firm. We're one of the only towns that you can let fireworks off. So I think people need to remember that. And I'm proud, I'm proud of this ordinance, and I hope it passes tonight.
If I can just provide a clarification, the actual, just, and I apologize for not organizing this maybe at the beginning. So the current order, which is 17-049, is more of the definitions document. The question and the reference in conversation is really about the next ordinance.
That's true.
So I just want to make sure that we're not duplicating our conversation. It's still valuable.
No, no.
It's still valuable because we had a question about it, but just to keep in mind, there is another ordinance that deals, the next one deals with fireworks, and this covers that.
Right. The order that's before us now is Chapter 608, which is the fireworks display ordinance. We'll have 608A up next. The gentleman from Phantom Fireworks rightly did not appreciate that we weren't combining the two, or that he shouldn't at this point take the opportunity to speak. So it was simply a misunderstanding. But I proceeded with an explanation of 608A. The explanation for 608 probably takes a lot less time, and this was brought to us by Chief Thurlo because of the fact that 608 was passed before the consumer fireworks law statute from Augusta was adopted. That created a definition of consumer fireworks. We needed to update the fireworks display ordinance, and that's really what 608, the amendments, the 608 is doing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
On 608?
608.
Let's see.
Yeah, 608.
Just clarification, we're not having second reading tonight. This is just the hearing.
Correct.
First reading.
This is first reading?
This is, this is the public hearing, and to schedule a second reading at a subsequent time. So we're not actually voting on the second reading this evening.
So with that, anything else? We don't need to vote because we're--
Correct.
Correct. So moving on to the next item, which is order number 17-050, seven o'clock public hearing and schedule a second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 608A, Town of Scarborough Consumer Fireworks Ordinance, Section 5, Use of Consumer Fireworks Restricted, Section 4, Violation of Enforcement, and Section 7, Notice, as presented by the ordinance committee. I'd like to open up the floor to any public comment regarding this item. Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. And any other comments from counsel regarding the conversation and the question that was proposed? Counselor Hayes?
Yeah, and I think I've, and I've actually had an opportunity to talk to the committee members, but, you know, I think it is well-written. There are just a couple pieces that strike me. One is, and I think it's already been referenced, is under the violation enforcement piece, Section 5A. It's been modified to say, "Any person who violates the provisions of this ordinance in the honor of any property upon which the violation of the ordinance occurs shall commit a civil violation punishable by a penalty of less than $100," blah, blah, blah. The only concern I have with that is that, I know there are a lot of individuals in Scarborough that may rent their property during the summer months. If in fact there's fireworks that are being set off and it's inappropriate, and the property owner didn't have any advanced knowledge of that or permission given, I think that's a little hard. I've already talked about that. I just raise a concern about that. I know in our neighborhood, we've had a bunch of kids that are out in the neighborhood that have gone across other people's properties and done things. So I'm just a little concerned, and I, the explanation is that officers will use their discretion. I still have a concern we're putting our officers in a really tough spot. So one suggestion I have would be if there's a way we can come back and revisit this after a year and see if there are issues and what has risen. The other piece of it specifically that I had a question about is on the, it actually references, report your neighbors, respect your neighbors. And on that, it says, "You need to respect your neighbors, and you cannot use fireworks in any way that could unreasonably disturb your neighbor's comfort and repose, or infringe upon their neighbor's safety or personal enjoyment of their property." And again, I have some concerns about, you know, you could have a situation in a neighborhood where, you know, someone could be setting off fireworks and their neighbors are absolutely fine. Half a block away, a block away, someone could be setting off the exact same fireworks, and there may be a neighbor that's concerned, and one person may be precluded from being able to do it based on sort of some objectivity. I'm just concerned without some real clear definition of unreasonably disturbed, that's in the eyes of the beholder, we're going to put officers in a really awkward position every time they get called out on one of these issues. We're going to make a resident math. We're either going to make the person calling saying, "It's unreasonably disturbing me." If the officer doesn't own that, they're going to be upset. If the officer, you know, agrees with the neighbor and stops the property owner from doing the fireworks, they're going to be upset. I just, we'd really like to think about that, but again, I'd be comfortable with if we say we're just going to reevaluate this after a year and see what issues we have. I'd be fine with that.
Any other comments, Counselor Cauzzo?
So I did ask some previous questions in writing, and I'll defer to Counselor Donovan if he wants to share those publicly. I don't want to go through all of those. I do want to say, though, that the issue of notice, I think, was misunderstood, and that was my fault for not wording the question properly. I wasn't referring to the commercial side of things. That's very clear how that permitting process works. I was referring to this consumer fireworks permit and application. And if the question, if it's just a documentation issue in terms of, we know my house, 17 Elmwood Avenue, is using fireworks on this day, or is it a permit, in which case I have to apply and receive permission from the fire department in order to use those? Because that, to me, sets off a little bit of a different requirement in terms of administration, because I then have to either wait for the fire department to say a blanket statement, yes, everybody can light fireworks, or no, there's a moratorium in town because of this issue or that issue. So I'd like a little bit more clarity on how that process is determined and what, who's administering that. It sounds like it's fire, but again, it sounds like it could be a bit onerous, especially around the holiday season. I think the question of the cost of notice for the businesses in town is also a concern of me, if, and only because it sounded like, from what you had initially said in your explanation, that whether it would be a piece of paper that they handed to every customer, I can see that being, eventually being somewhat costly. Would they be allowed to print a placard and paste it at the exit and say, "Please refer to the sign," or just draw their attention to it on the way out? Or do you expect them, for compliance reasons, to give individual notice to each one? Or can they just simply refer to the sign and say, "Please read the sign on your way out, it's required," and then move on, so they're not paying to have hundreds of thousands of pieces of paper going forward? That would be my question, how do they comply with that request? Or what's the boundaries for complying with that request? Does that make sense?
He's taking notes, so it must.
Well, you could be taking notes to ask me later, because--
Okay, that's okay.
No, I'm happy to answer this. The notice provision was intended to be an individual notice, and that's because when we reviewed the materials from Phantom Fireworks, they already printed most of what the specific requirements were in the Town of Scarborough. Dates, hours, things of that nature. So it was already going out in every, every bag that was sent out. So it didn't seem like it was going to be difficult to add, there is a notification process to be allowed to let off fireworks in the Town of Scarborough. See Chapter--
of me, if, and only because it sounded like, from what you had initially said in your explanation, that whether it would be a piece of paper that they handed to every customer, I can see that being, eventually being somewhat costly. Would they be allowed to print a placard and paste it at the exit and say, "Please refer to the sign," or just draw their attention to it on the way out? Or do you expect them, for compliance reasons, to give individual notice to each one? Or can they just simply refer to the sign and say, "Please read the sign on your way out, it's required," and then move on, so they're not paying to have hundreds of thousands of pieces of paper going forward? That would be my question, how do they comply with that request? Or what's the boundaries for complying with that request? Does that make sense?
He's taking notes, so it must.
Well, you could be taking notes to ask me later, because he doesn't...
Okay, that's okay.
No, I'm happy to answer this. The notice provision was intended to be an individual notice, and that's because when we reviewed the materials from Phantom Fireworks, they already printed most of what the specific requirements were in the Town of Scarborough. Dates, hours, things of that nature. So, it was already going out in every, every bag that was sent out. So, it didn't seem like it was going to be difficult to add, there is a notification process to be allowed to let off fireworks in the Town of Scarborough, see Chapter 608A, see the Scarborough website, Town of Scarborough website. As to your other question, it's not a permit process. We became convinced by the testimony of Chief Thurlo and his staff that that represented a liability risk that, that we did not want to assume as a town, as a municipality. And so, it became simply a notification process, where it's an obligation of each person who wants to use consumer fireworks on the Fourth of July in the Town of Scarborough, and that can be done by an online submission, or at every fire station, or the police station. And it's just, it's, it's not an approval, it's drop it off, email it. So, pretty simple.
So, what I would like to suggest, because this is, the intent was to schedule the second reading, is that if there are any more questions, that maybe we should contact the Chair of the Ordinance Committee, and he can include those in the final presentation at the second reading, because it's not really intended to have a debate at this time about the value of this. So, I have some for you, I won't share today, but I do have...
Please.
I'll submit them, if you don't mind. Thank you. Order number, moving on to Order Number 17-052. It's a seven o'clock public hearing, and schedule a second reading. Sorry, I missed one.
Who needs to vote to?
Order Number 17-051, a seven o'clock public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to Chapter 313A. The Town of Scarborough Property Tax Relief, Section 5. Determination of Eligibility and Amount of Eligibility, as presented by the Ordinance Committee. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on the item? Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing and move this to a second reading. And just for the public to understand, the change in the recommendation is to increase the amount from $500 to $600.
This is the second reading, correct?
This is.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize.
In which case, I'd like to move the issue.
Absolutely, sorry.
I move.
Motion.
Second.
And overview from the Ordinance Committee.
All right. This was the pros and cons of increasing from $500 to $600. The award that would be provided to senior property, senior property owners who qualified was reviewed carefully. We decided that it, because nothing had been done in a great deal of time, taxes had gone up a considerable amount since the $500 limit had been set, that it was appropriate at this time. It did not affect this year's budget, because we had allocated sufficient funds, plus there were $64,000 worth of reserve funds, and that would exceed any reasonable likelihood of what we would have to pay out based on last year's performance. So, based on that, we unanimously endorsed the idea of increasing the payment from $500 to $600.
Any questions or comments from council? I actually have one question. So, I know how the $600 came forward, because it was an increase that had not happened. I would prefer, if possible, to possibly add an amendment, so that this adjusts annually with some metrics, so that this does not need to be revisited after so many years. That way, there's the automatic adjustment that goes into place. The question I have is, did the committee discuss what metrics that might, could be tied to, whether it's, you know, CPI, whatever it might be?
And we did talk about all the different ways in which improvements might be made, and concluded that a second year of data would help us to understand, are we in a stable situation? Is the best way to go to have kind of a COLA adjustment? Or are there stepped levels? Because you can do it a lot of different ways. And so, we thought that would require some careful analysis by the Ordinance Committee. And so, we will have the data after October 15th. The Ordinance Committee will, I think, probably take it right up and start to look at, what should be the next step? And your suggestion, Mr. Chair, was one that was right there in the forefront.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Sinclair?
I think part of the reason why we did it this way was, we really wanted to get that $600 into the system and have it get going, because we did get numerous requests for it, and it was important, important at the time. So, I think that's why we decided to do it this way, and then give us more time to work out the formula that should be used in the future.
And if you can take a footnote, one possible solution is to tie it into the tax rate increase in that given year, or decrease.
Definitely one of the ways in which we...
I've never seen a decrease in taxes, but I just...
It's possible. So, with that, thank you for the answer.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, all in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. The next item is Order Number 17-052. It's a public hearing and schedule a second reading on the request for discontinence of a portion of Beach Ridge Road and schedule a public hearing, as presented to us by the Town Engineer. I'd like to open it up for public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on the item? I love you. Hopefully my wife will watch my face. No, actually, there is a typo, because this is the second reading, so I apologize. But is there anybody that would like to speak at the public hearing? Not seeing any, we'll close, and...
No. If I could put the hearing down there. The second reading has been scheduled.
Oh, scheduled public, okay, it's already been scheduled. Sorry, a couple of typos, my fault. So, this is a, to schedule a second reading, so that will be in two weeks. Moving on to the next item. Order Number 17-054. It's a seven o'clock public hearing and action on the new request for a food handler's license. A, Melissa Carr doing business as Aurora Provisions at the Beach, located at Forest Steel Rock Drive. And B, BH M17 LLC doing business as Beach House Market, located at 27 East Grand Avenue. Open up the public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak on the item? Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing, and this is an action item, so if there is a motion from the council.
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions from council? Councilor Foley?
I'm just happy to see someone took this on, it's been sitting empty for a couple of years, and I know the folks down at Pine Point have been hoping that someone would come in and continue its use, so, good luck to them.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, and the pleasure of the council, all in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. Next item is Resolution 17-003, Act on Resolution 17-003. Requesting the Town Council's support on transportation improvement program projects to PACTs. And this is presented to us by the Town Engineer. And I would like to open that up to, actually, if I can ask the Town Engineer to maybe do a presentation before any public comment?
I'm going to make this really brief. I was here a year ago when we put in an application for the 2019 funds through PACTs for this section of East Grand Avenue. Unfortunately, it was not funded. There were other projects in the region that were further along with their design. Since then, we have moved our preliminary design forward. We've had some public meetings down at Pine Point, part of our master plan effort and initiative. This is a complete streets project, and there's the cover letter in your packet that talks about the rebuild of that roadway, including the drainage system and bike and ped facilities, as well as parking and, and other amenities. So, at this point, we have moved the project forward with the design, and we are again reapplying to PACTs, this time for the construction funds for the 2020 and 2021 complex projects that kind of changed how their funding mechanism and the application works. So, I'm again in front of you, just asking for an endorsement of the application. It is not securing funds at this time, or securing our match associated with it. It's basically a piece to the application to say, "The town supports it, and supports staff putting in the application to move this project forward."
Is there any questions for the Town Engineer? No, no for the Town Engineer. Councilor Hayes?
Just a quick question, so the schematic we have, I mean, is this the actual design that's proposed, or is it just kind of a placeholder for the process and the application?
Yep, it's a placeholder. We, our application is pretty thick, so I didn't include that, but it has in that the cost estimate. So, basically, that's kind of the summary of the application, giving you the costs and really the highlights of the project. And that preliminary design is not complete.
So, it's going to allow some input from the project?
Right, so we have more public meetings scheduled down there, and, and really, because it's so far out for construction funds 2020, they just wanted to see that we're further along, which we are substantially from where we were. It's just, we still have obviously more than two years to kind of complete that process and before we start digging.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Engineer? Not seeing any, thank you very much. I'd like to open it up to public hearing, if anybody would like to speak on the item. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing, and this is an actual item, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions for staff or council? Yes, Councilor Kehser?
I'm just curious, does this typically need a resolution for support? Don't we typically just, does it need a formal resolution?
Well, I think to really fulfill the application requirements, it's best to have a formal action of the elected legislative body, and it seems to be the best form.
Other than a vote, I mean, because I think typically, we just authorize the process, don't we, through a vote? Do we actually do? I mean, I'm not questioning, I'm just, I don't recall ever doing resolutions for projects like this, but...
We have.
We do, okay. Okay.
Question, or Tony says we have.
Why, no, I, I've been, I'm stand corrected, absolutely, 100%.
Keep it, keep in mind, this is just an application, so...
No, interesting.
Yeah. Nothing's guaranteed. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, all in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. There is no old business at this time. Moving into new business, Order Number 17-055. It's a first reading and refer to the Planning Board on the proposed Fourth Amendment to Contract Zone I. Frank R. Goodwin, or is that one? I, Frank R. Goodwin, E. and F. Limited Liability Company in Raymond C. Field Land Rover Dealership, located at 371 U.S. Route 1, as presented to us by the Planning Department. If I could ask for an overview from one of our staff members?
Jay's here from a process point of view, the applicant.
As Mr. Hall just mentioned, I can speak just really in terms of process at this point, and then maybe the applicants are prepared to give you more of an overview of what they're looking to do. But hopefully, in your package, you received a memorandum from me dated June 1st. Essentially, what you're being asked to do is consider a first reading, which, if the council sees fit to move this forward, it would go to the Planning Board. The Planning Board would begin their preliminary site plan review of this process. Once the applicant receives preliminary site plan review, it would come back to the council for set public reading, I'm sorry, public hearing, second reading approval. And then, again, should you actually adopt the Contract Zone Amendment, it would go back to the Planning Board for final site plan review. If it fails here tonight, then that's what happens. So, there's sort of two, two questions before the board tonight. And then, also, my memo, just to provide a real brief background, the initial Contract Zone was in 1996. It's the first contract zone in the community. It was first amended in 2000, which enabled the building to increase by roughly 1,300 square feet from the original 8,000 to about 9,300 square feet. In 2004, there was a Second Amendment, which enabled another 4,000 square foot addition up to about 30, 13, yeah, 13,700 square feet. Most recently, in 2016, the applicant was before you for roughly 1,000 square foot increase. That actually hasn't been enacted or taken place, that development didn't take place, and that was actually going to really redesign the whole building. That was pretty much a full redesign. Now, the applicant's before you to seek an increase of a building up to 16,500 square feet, and I'm sure they're prepared to talk maybe a little bit more about the details of what that would look like, so. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but...
Good evening. My name is Paul Strowski from Sebago Technics, and with me is Ryan Senator, Ryan Senator Architects. As long as you, some of you may know, last year, this was in front of the Town Council for a Contract Zone Amendment to increase the allowable square footage to roughly 14,000, I think, 750 square feet. And again, that project has never come to fruition. Some of the dealership brandings have changed. Requires an additional expansion onto the building, which would actually exceed the maximum allowable square footage in that recently enacted Contract Zone Amendment. Therefore, as that was actually approved and recorded, we are back again to request in a, another amendment to increase that allowable square footage to 16,500. As currently planned, the building is approximately 15,600 square feet, so we've added a little bit of leeway in there. If the building, for any reason, expands, we won't have to come back again. Apparently, we didn't learn from the mistake we made at Mercedes. And it will drastically change some of the exterior of the, of the building. There's not a drastic increase on total parking. They're actually, with the expansion, are going to lose some parking in the front of the building, which will then be put back by removal of that, of the existing rock wall or rock climbing area for the vehicles. And on the back of this is a picture of the existing facade. As, as looking on Route 1, and again, the current branding of the Land Rover and Jaguar is drastic from this. And I'll turn it over to Ryan to kind of discuss some of the proposed building changes.
I'm Ryan Senator with RSA. Like Paul had mentioned, we came before you about a year ago with a very similar rendering here. Many of you may not notice much of a difference. In terms of the architectural design, it's virtually identical to what we had approved by yourselves in the Planning Board. Essentially, what, what happened was, we were, the, the brand, the JLR Jaguar Land Rover Guidelines, had changed a bit, kind of fluidly as we were designing the building, and we needed a bit more interior office space. And so, what, what that kind of made us do was push out the service bay 16 feet. So, that's basically, the exterior effect change is this area right here, and then this wall of the showroom bumped out a few feet. So, that's really the, the physical change to the design, a bit of a footprint change. But in terms of materials, architectural design, everything else is virtually identical. And so, that's, you know, that's kind of the scope of why we're here.
Any questions for the owners, or the engineers, architects? Any questions? No? Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. And this is obviously an actual item, so if there is a motion from the council...
So moved.
Second. And any questions or comments?
Seems in order.
Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Order Number 17-046. First reading and refer to the Planning Board on the proposed amendment to Chapter 405, the Scarborough Zoning Ordinance. Definition of a golf course, as presented to us by the Planning Department. If I could have the interim director speak on this before public comments.
Good evening. The owner of the Willedale Golf Course came to us a while back with a request to have a dwelling unit included in an accessory building, an accessory use at the golf course. And the reason for the request... And the reason for the request, or the reason to do this accessory unit, was really to have an onsite manager be able to stay on the golf course and ostensibly to help with security and have someone there on a 24-hour basis. And what it turned out is that where Willedale Golf Course is, interesting enough, he could do a single-family unit as part of the underlying zoning. But he couldn't do an apartment or a dwelling unit in an existing building, which is what he really wanted to do. So we took a look at this from a couple of different ways. We looked at, you know, is this a common use for a golf course? Do golf courses tend to have an onsite manager or a dwelling unit or anything like that? And what we found by talking to some other courses across the state and the National Association is that it is not uncommon. It's not the majority of courses, but it happens a lot to really take care of that security measure. So we looked at a couple of different ways to do it. And we really came back to, we didn't need to change anything on the zone itself where he was. We looked at the definition. And the reason we took this course was because we already had an example of a similar type of use or accessory use in the mini warehouse storage units. So in the existing zoning ordinance, we have a provision that does allow for an accessory use, accessory dwelling unit for a mini storage. For the exact same reason, it's a security issue. So what we did is we really lifted that language that came from the description of the mini warehouse. And we incorporated it into the definition of the golf course. So that's why there's no map amendment, there's nothing else that's changing. It's simply a, an additional phrase in the definition of the golf course. And really, what it says is, I'll give you the first part of the language, which already exists, which is a golf course, put the glasses on. "A golf course may include a clubhouse, shelter for players, and other accessory structures, including," and we've added, "one dwelling unit in an accessory structure and is an accessory use to the golf course, provided the dwelling is occupied by a resident facility manager or by an on-duty, or by on-duty employees of the facility." So we felt like that covered his particular need. And it really made sense for golf courses in general. We did take this to the Long Range Planning Committee. And the Long Range Planning Committee certainly felt this was reasonable. But what they did ask, there was a, originally, we had inserted the word "only a residential manager." And they felt like that was going to be restrictive if there was a spouse or something like that, or a partner, or whatever, that we, they wanted to remove that word, "only." And we did make that change. And that's what's before you tonight, is a change in the definition of golf course that will allow an accessory dwelling unit in a, in a building such as a storage facility or a clubhouse or something like that.
Thank you. Any, yeah, any questions for the interim director? Not seeing any, thank you very much. Any public comment? Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment section. And this is a first reading, yeah, first reading and refer so. An action to refer to this, to the planning board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments from council? Not seeing any, I'm...
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to mention, part of the Long Range Planning discussion too was the thought that predominantly, the use is going to be more in the interim kind of thing. So if the person has to spend the evening there, or it's, I don't know if it's, they have the option of being a full-time dwelling if they want it. But I think the intent was more of case, you know, if somebody's closing and then opening the next morning, they got a place to live. So it's not like it's a, they have the right to put a regular house on there, that would be different. This was kind of a, almost like adding an apartment kind of thing to an existing structure. So Long Range Planning didn't really have any issues with it, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Next item is order number 17-057. Act on the request to appoint Larissa Crockett as the acting town manager in accordance with Chapter 200, the Scarborough Town Charter, Article 3, Section 305, absence of the town manager as presented to us by the town manager. Could have an overview by the town manager before public comment.
Yes, as is referenced in the title of this action, the Town Charter provides for the event of my absence. And through the years during my tenure here, most of the time, it's been the Chief Moulton that served in this capacity with your consent. But there have been periods of time when the HR director assumed those roles and responsibilities. I have placed this notice on file with clerk as the charter requires, but it does require the consent of council and therefore, it's before you this evening. Regarding Ms. Crockett, she holds the title. Her job description, I think, is very consistent with the sort of duties that may be required in my limited absence. And she has passed her probationary period, so I think it's only fitting that we now make this move.
Thank you. Any public comments? Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment and the action of the council.
So moved.
Second.
And any comments or questions, Council St. Clair?
Is it in the charter that, my concern is adding her name specifically. So is it in the charter that, that the duty is already go to the assistant town manager? So do you see what I'm saying? Like, I agree that it should go since we've now established that we do have an assistant town manager and hopefully, we'll continue to keep that position funded. My concern is putting her name into that. I would prefer to just leave it as whoever is having the office of the assistant town manager. In case there is something that happens and we find ourselves with a new town assistant town manager, then we don't have to bring it back to council to change it again.
Good point.
That was my only concern with that.
Yeah, good point. The charter, perhaps we can pick that up the next time you review it. But the current charter language didn't recognize the positions, didn't exist.
Because we never had it.
So I think that's something we could pick up, should you go back and look at the former charter commissions. So great suggestion, and I'll make note of that. But in the meantime, I think we do need to name her specifically.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, all in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
And order number 17-058. Act on the request to renew the town manager's contract. And this was presented by the council chair as an overview. And then I'll open it up to public comments. Just to kind of go over the process that has taken place. There are certain stipulations within the manager's contracts that we must meet from a timeline perspective, such as when we must provide a semi-annual and annual review, as well as in a contract year, or I should say, in an expiring contract year, the manager, the town council and the manager must communicate with each other on the desire to enter the negotiations or the desire to, in essence, become a free agent, if that's kind of how you need to look at it. All of those communications have been met and have been met according to the timeline. We did have an executive session in which we talked about how we would like to strategize that conversation and negotiations with the manager. And I've completed that as prescribed by both the charter and the town policy in which the council chair is to facilitate that. And as a result of that, the presentation of the existing contract, or the continuation of the existing contract with no change in any of its provisions or benefits has been presented to you in which the manager has offered and is willing to accept. Highlights, I don't have the specifics, is that there is obviously a base salary that can adjust annually based upon the increase that senior managers receive. And then there are other benefits that are normal with the position that includes expense reimbursements. I think there is also car reimbursement, car payment reimbursement, as well as there is a bonus structure. There is also other benefits, healthcare and things such as that. So it is a continuation of the existing contract. And I'd be happy to answer any questions before we open it up to public comment. Is that where they can hear, any questions from council regarding that? With that, I would like to open it up to public comment if anybody would like to speak on the item. Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment. And is there an action of the council?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Council Donovan?
Well, I think the world of our town manager. So I'm very happy to have us negotiate a new contract with him. And I'm delighted to support this.
Thank you. Just one, I did want to mention, I forgot to mention, the council recently changed one of its committees to include the responsibilities of personnel negotiations. That is the appointments and personnel committee. The primary purpose of that committee, and they've been charged by the council, is to complete a compensation analysis for the position. It has nothing to do with town's performance, but rather, we are all new to this contract negotiation because I don't think any of us, maybe Council St. Clair was here for the last one, correct, Council? So it's a very new process, so we wanted to see where are we in the market. And so that committee is charged with doing the research along with our human resource director to see what type of benefits, what is the compensation, and to look at how we can position ourselves going forward. So I do want you to be aware that we are looking at and it's being taken very seriously. In the end, I just want to mention, very appreciative, especially since I get to work so closely with you, very appreciative of the fact that you're willing to continue employment. I think this town, this is one of the most significant investments the town can make. And I do appreciate the effort that you put into it. And the quality of your professionalism speaks to also the value of your contract. So I appreciate that very much. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, all in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, non-action items, there are none. Item number nine are standing and special committee reports. And I'll start with Council Foley.
That's weird.
Yes.
Eastern Trail Alliance had their 5K at O'Reilly's. I made it almost the whole, 3.1 miles. But it was beautiful day, they had a great turnout, and I think they raised over almost $10,000. So they were really, really pleased. Also, for the Eastern Trail Alliance, right here in town, the True Choice, True Town and Country Federal Credit Union, held an event on Saturday that was also to help spread awareness. And that was also very well received and attended. A couple of the committees met, but I'll let those chairs go ahead and share their reports. That's all I have.
Council St. Clair?
Okay. Communications met. So we did a roundtable last week. It was really well attended, actually. We were very encouraged with the numbers. We had about 20, 25 people, which I thought was good. It's interesting because the bigger it got, the more nervous I got because I don't want it, I don't want, it's like you want people, but you don't want too many people because you don't want to lose that intimate setting and that conversation piece. But actually, it turned out to be perfect. Every single person that was there had time to speak, to give their opinion. We got a lot of really good feedback, actually. And some little things that we can be doing to improve our communication with the public that we've actually already been able to put into place, which is amazing to me in a couple of days. We are reviewing our notes. We have a meeting on Friday. After the committee reviews the notes from the roundtable, we're actually going to distribute them to the council so that you guys can all read that and see what the people are thinking. It was great, too, because we had a very diverse group. So I always think that's good. We had a couple of people that represented young families all the way up to our senior citizens group, which is fabulous. We've actually been asked to go on the road, so to speak, with our roundtable. We've been asked by one of the beaches, and I think another one is going to, we're supposed to schedule to speak to them tomorrow, to come and actually focus, do a focus group in their areas. And so that sort of made me think that if we're going to do it in one or two of those areas, why not go and try to hit all of the areas? So we're going to look into that and talk to some people and try to see if we have an interest in doing it. So far, so good. You know, it was funny because some of the people that were, nobody was combative, nobody was upset. But, you know, a couple of the people that had strong opinions stayed after and really made it a point to thank us for what we were doing, which was kind of cool. I mean, they were, in one hand, they were upset by some of the things that we had done, but yet they saw that the council was willing to listen and hear what they had to say. And they were appreciative of that. And that was, you know, it's always nice when you walk out of a meeting feeling good about the meeting. And that was definitely one that I walked out of and felt like maybe we made a little bit of a difference in that one. So the election table. So part of our hope is that any town event will have a council table. And the next real town event that we have is the election. The cool thing about this election is that there are no counselors running. In that, it's a school election, which means everybody can work at the council table. So if you're interested and you have time, please email me and I'll fill the slots. Otherwise, I'll have to be there all day by myself. I don't think anybody wants that. So I think that's it for communications. I did also want to say, some of the feedback that we got, Sean, it was kind of neat because I think people are seeing the openness of the fact that we're willing to make changes. And that, one thing I talked about was how we're not, it's so easy to kind of go with the norm and stick to the norm because in your mind, the norm has always worked. So why fix something when you don't think it's broken? But in reality, there's usually always sometimes better ways to do things. And it was really nice to see that these people could recognize that, that you as a leader and us as a council are willing to make some of these changes. And that was, that was really great feedback to get. And it was nice to actually sit in front of someone and have them say that about this council. It was endearing. So that's it for communications, for me.
Thank you. Council Rowan?
So I said co-met. It is, just based on their meeting schedule, the, they need to start talking about this September annual meeting. And so they were doing some planning for that, as well as like the discussion about the comprehensive plan and then the financials for the year. Historic Preservation also met, who was also there. They're also about heading off on a summer hiatus, but went over a number of issues, most significantly, a lengthy discussion about revisiting the list of 48 historically important dwellings in town, given that what's happening with the redevelopment of 79 County Road. And there are a couple of other houses that have been remodeled and are kind of lost their historic significance. So that's going to be a big focus when they come back in the fall.
Anything else? Council Hayes?
Yeah, actually, I don't have anything this evening. It's kind of a...
Council Donovan?
Planning Board met on Monday. No, I've been really trying to keep us all abreast of affordable housing projects. Nothing new on that, but there was some interesting things. Out at 62 Muzzy Road, an Asian Fusion Restaurant is, was before the planning board for a sketch plan review. It is located as you head from here to Walmart and you cross Muzzy Road, look diagonally to your right, across from the church. It's that site, there was a dilapidated building there, house there. Over here on Plaza Drive, there's a mixed-use development. Plaza is the little roadway that connects from McDonald's to Bank of America. And there's a mixed-use expansion of that area going in. Out in North Scarborough, on County Road, which is Route 22, heading into, heading out to Gorham or heading into Portland, daycare facility. It is to be located, if you're at O'Donnell's, go back towards Portland, about a quarter mile on the other side of the street, O'Donnell's Nursery. And out on Hagus Parkway, across from that, you know, the ponds, there are some visible ponds out there. A fitness facility is undergoing site plan review. So some good activity in town. Comprehensive plan kickoff meetings, we all, I think most all of us attended those. Think the public would be interested in that. We met the consultants. We had some one-on-one discussions to, with the consultants to express our own sense of what priorities are as the comprehensive plan kickoff occurred. I went to the GP COG Annual Meeting at St. Joseph's College. It was a half-day affair. And you'd think it was going to be a, you know, a lot of time wasted, but I really thought it was excellent. The new director there, Christina Egan, is a real firecracker. She is really on top of it. And I've gotten to know her as chair of the Metro Regional Coalition, having to work more closely with her on that. But the GP COG Annual Meeting had sessions on marijuana with Drummond Woodson attorney, who told us a lot about where things were. who told us a lot about where things were with the legislature, and I should probably give you a more of a written report on that rather than here. South Portland councillor, and South Portland is going straight for it, they are going to be very aggressive, remarkably so. Everyone in the building, I think all the municipal officials were saying, this is a go-slow process, because you can easily stub your toe, but that's not how South Portland is approaching it. Scarborough PD received the President's Award, the only award given by GP Cog each year for its Operation Hope program. Chief was there, it was great, that was exciting. Ordinance Committee worked a lot behind the scenes, but our next agenda is this Friday, but we were working, the three members exchanging materials and advancing things, so that was a busy time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tiazzo?
Nothing, since the last meeting.
Great.
A couple of items for me, first, in the library, our next meeting is June 15th. At the last meeting, they did want me to express their gratitude regarding the budget and our approval, even though they may not have done everything, they were extremely happy that they did receive the approval for the CIP project for the solicitor annual, so did want to express their gratitude. Also, wanted to mention that I've provided them with at least your council email and phone numbers that are published for public consumption, because they are extremely pleased with the sudden support for their projects and for their, the public as well, so everyone is going to get probably a solicitation for the annual drive, because they are constantly looking to fund their gap. Wanted to mention, EcoMaine has their annual meeting, I believe it's June 15th, Council Donovan?
Yes.
Which will be my last, as the former, as the outgoing council member for this council, and Council Donovan has taken that over. So, you know, when we talk about regional efforts, and you talk about communications and changing communications, I know that most of you may not have been watching 15 years ago when it was Regional Waste Systems, but that is an incredible success story under the leadership of Kevin Roach and the members of their board. It's just an absolutely incredible organization that is doing really good things for all of the member communities. You know, and that was when this council not only did a very good job locally in representing Scarborough, but really focused a lot on regional efforts, and you know, that was with the help of Council Foley Ferguson, Sue Foley Ferguson, Mark Maroon, Patrick O'Reilly, Jeff Messer, and quite a few people. So it was, Scarborough was reckoned with, could not be reckoned with as part of our involvement, because we had a very strong influence, and that is a perfect product, so I'm very happy about their growth and where they are today. And last, this is a notification, as Chair, wanted to provide, and I don't have the date in the top of my head, but in the second meeting for July, July and August, if you aren't aware, our policy is that we will only have one meeting, it's the first meeting of the month, the first Wednesday?
Third, third meeting.
Third, sorry.
Third Wednesday of the month.
Third Wednesday. So the goal is that in July would be the first, that's not July 4th, is it, the first one?
No, it's the third Wednesday of July and August.
Right.
Right.
So it's the first and third, so we're going to have a meeting the third, which is our regular, we don't have one on the first, I'm trying to schedule a workshop.
Gotcha.
And so I thought it was the third, so it would be the first meeting in July, that will be the workshop, that will cover goals and our metrics. And then the goal of that is to identify where we are in our goals and those metrics, and then also try to either reassess where we are, but then also, I'd like to close that out with a discussion around our communications and norms, and get a reaffirmation of where we are with that. So I'm going to be sending out a survey and the information here very quickly. I apologize, I would have done it sooner, for some reason I was thinking it was the third Wednesday of July that we did not have a meeting, so I've got to get off my keys or and get this done, so I'll get working on it. With that, I have nothing else. Town Managers Report?
Yes, thank you. First, thank you to every one of you for the employment contract, I really do appreciate the relationship, and having worked in four different communities over 25 years, I can tell you it's so much more rewarding when I'm working with folks that are all kind of working in the same direction. And I think I can say that on behalf of staff, it really makes such an appreciable difference in terms of job satisfaction, but also productivity, and I really feel as though we've got a good team working in the same direction, so thank you. I wanted to mention that I have organized a site walk with the residents in Pine Point regarding Avenue 2. We had a very productive meeting, one of the things that came out of that was some questions and interest and, I think, a recognition that getting down on the ground and understanding the natural features, maybe what trees they want to save, what sort of landscaping's being proposed, everyone to a person thought that was a great idea. So we've arranged that for June 15th at 2:00 PM. I expect anywhere from 4:00 to 6:00, residents will be there, the landscape architect, and I think the homeowners as well. So I'll certainly report back. This matter, as you may recall, is scheduled to come back to you at your next meeting, two weeks?
Twenty-first.
And so I'll be coordinating with the council chair in that regard, and hopefully have some good news to report. Again, very positive first meeting, and hope we'll continue that momentum with the site walk. I did want to mention, and a number of councils, I think, have been contacted, there's a resident down here off Soria Road in the Sawgrass subdivision, who's having, expressing concerns with a neighbor regarding what really is medical marijuana lawfully being grown in the backyard, and it's raised a number of issues, as you're probably aware, we simply rely on state statute for medical marijuana at this point, and heretofore, there have not been all that many complaints, frankly. Of course, the other issue looming before us is the recreational marijuana, and this council's taking its first step, kind of the initiative regarding moratorium. I was just looking back at my notes, you actually scheduled a public hearing at your September 6th meeting, so really before you know it, this issue will be coming back. The point of that was to really allow the state to take some time and to understand what sort of rules and regulations they'll promulgate, which may help inform what we should do locally. Local press, I should say, the TV stations have been interested in this story, so I'll just kind of alert you to that, and it may be a matter that the ordinance committee may want to just talk about, and I'm pleased to help you through that conversation. With regards to the workshop earlier, I certainly appreciate your attention, I guess I apologize somewhat for how disjointed it was. This is a complicated set of variables, if you will, and I suppose if there was something good that came from that, there was kind of confirmation, what many of you were saying are the same concerns that Karen and Dan before, and I had been sharing for a year and a half or two with Mr. Grandin, and it really got to the point that he needed to hear it from others. So there remains to be seen where that project goes, but I appreciate your attention to it, and I somewhat apologize for it being disjointed. And lastly, we did receive good news, you may recall or not, the town is actually part of the Department of Labor SHAPE Program, which basically gives us a free pass. Other organizations, public and private, can get an unannounced Department of Labor visit, checking for workplace safety, and that's not a fun experience. We've signed up for this voluntarily, and it basically gives us a free pass during the period, and so we're good again until September 2018. So I really appreciate staff's effort to work hard to get in their good graces and get a, get as a jail-free card, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember comments? Council Tiazzo?
No comments, other than June 13th is the school budget vote and the bond issue for the fuel station. I highly encourage everybody to go out and express your opinion one way or the other. Hopefully, it's, certainly for the bond issue, I think we've stated our case fairly clearly and straightforward with that, but certainly encourage everybody to get out there and either vote. When does absentee close, Tody?
Tomorrow, and then Friday and Monday you have to have the special circumstance in order to vote.
Okay, thank you. So tomorrow's the last day absentee, and then after that, see you on the 13th.
Thank you. Councilor Hayes?
Yeah, I think I'd echo the same, you know, hope to see everybody at the polls on the 13th, and I just encourage everybody, there's been lots of things written and some sort of different ways of looking at the numbers, so just take some time and, you know, try to understand what's in front of you, and look forward to having you seen there at the polls. Thank you.
Councilor St. Clair?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, I know that you guys got it in your email, June 19th, the Bike for Books program is going to be taking place. Our foundation actually got involved with them last year, this year, we did it again, we, I think we did four or five bikes for it, which is really fun. I know that they're giving away 48, so that's amazing. Everyone's invited to come, and all the councilors are invited to come, when they present those, it's actually a raffle lottery. So every book a kid reads at the age-appropriate level, they get a raffle ticket, and so they give away 48 bikes to 48 kids, and it's really, if you haven't seen it before, it's a really, some of these kids absolutely go nuts, so it really is, it's a fun thing, it'll be, like he says, it'll be the best thing you do all day, is to go and see these kids win those bikes. They come complete with the helmet, they're all decked out, so it's very cool. The other thing, a couple weeks ago, I got to volunteer with Heidi's House, which is a daycare center in town, and they're nationally accredited for their programs, and it was really neat, my daughter actually attends school there, but to go in and do it as a volunteer, to see another side of it, and see some of the other programs that they offer, it was really fun, and I got to talk a little bit about the council, and you know, you're never too young to start learning, and it was, it was a neat experience. So if you're ever looking for an afternoon of something to do, I know they're always looking for volunteers over there, they have a big center, and the kids are just amazing. So that was fun. And don't forget, if any of you want to help on Tuesday at the polls, please let me know. And other than that, I am good.
Thank you. Council Foley?
I would just echo what Councilor Hayes and Councilor Tiazzo were saying, there has been a fair amount, I think we've made progress, but there's still a fair amount of discourse in the community around the numbers, and this side is lying and that side is lying, and you know, we've done the best job, we put forth a number unanimously that we all agreed with, and we think it's acceptable, and if it's not to you, then your opportunity is to tell us that at the polls. Most importantly, I want people to vote, but I also want people to be respectful of the different perspectives and approaches that are out there. I don't take offense to anybody who tells me that what we're putting out there is too high, I tell them to exercise their right to vote. So just get to the polls.
Council Rowan?
Yeah, so I would also encourage people to vote, I would say, that was a difficult budget to pass, and I think they did a good job with it, and I'm encouraging people to pass it. The, there's also, I believe there's a public safety tour on Wednesday at that?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Does anyone have the details of that, I just happened to?
Sorry, we should have, Peter and I should have, just one of us should have grabbed that.
Yeah, that's right.
We do have the details, and we can get it out to you.
Okay, but it's 6 o'clock next Wednesday, is that what I understand, public is invited?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, open house at the police station.
Yep.
They're going to give a tour, you can go through the building, they're going to actually do a little presentation about, you know, what the new building looks like and why, and I think by going through the building, you get a good sense of?
See why.
Yeah.
And then I also would endorse Heidi's Southside 2 graduates as well, it's a wonderful facility.
Yeah.
Graduate.
I think we've all seen the 7.4% increase signs out there, and I was appalled by it. I think it's a, you know, it's so disrespectful to the work that was put in by our finance committee and the schools finance committee, it so misrepresents what was the result of our budget effort. And I've had, I was playing in the None Such mentally and said to this guy, I didn't know him, he said, "Oh, it's never going to pass, 7.4% tax increase." I said, "That's not it at all." And for anyone out there, just so you'll know, whether you think it's a cost increase, spending increase year over year, or a tax impact increase year over year, what we have proposed is a town increase of 2.2% of spending from last year, and 3.39% is the schools' increase in spending. And the overall, which we can't nail precisely, because we have to wait for the August assessment by the assessor, runs from 2.8 up to 4, with a mid-range of 3.49, 3.5% with my expectation that we'll get money out of Augusta, and it'll be closer to 2.8 than it will be to any other number. And here we have signs put everywhere in town, 7.4% increase. It's outrageous. And so I stopped, I read the sign, I got out of my car to see who was, it was attributed to, smart taxes. That's, to me, they're just smart alecks. There's, there's, there's no, I don't think you can trust people who would manipulate the public. And this guy on the golf course just said, "No, this is never going to pass." I said, "Really?" So that bothered me a lot, and seeing the signs all side by side, that bothered me a lot. The whole thing, I thought, stunk. So that's just my own two cents on that. On a much nicer note, the Highland Avenue Greenhouse, I'd like to recognize, out on Highland Avenue, and reading from the press release, this year's Main Family Business Awards drew 166 nominations for recognition, from which seven winners were named. The event was sponsored by the Institute for Family-Owned Business in Portland. Highland Avenue Greenhouse of Scarborough received the Mattie Corson Small Business Award, presented to an exemplary business with fewer than 25 employees. The nearly 70-year-old company was acknowledged for the way it has continued to evolve, adding services that provide value and convenience to customers, and adopting new approaches to making its business more environmentally friendly and sustainable, such as switching to biological pest control in the greenhouse, and adding a commercial kitchen at its farm stand to produce baked goods, soup sandwiches, and prepared-to-go meals. And I can personally attest to the chicken pot pie, so I will, I will, I will say that. So congratulations to Joe and Christine, I'm not sure how you pronounce it, Visconi is probably the way. And lastly, the Higgins Beach Character Code Audit is advancing. This Sunday, June 11th, there will be an open house with the people who developed it originally, for input by people, and it's being held at the Higgins Beach Association in Clovis. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple items. First, I am totally shocked that no one has mentioned this, graduation is this weekend, so I want to congratulate all of our graduating class, but also thank their parents and the teachers that invested so much in their pathway to this successful milestone. A special congratulations personally to, no, no, man, I won't say personally, but to every, you know, when you're getting older, when you remember these little kids that came through the rec program, and now they're starting to graduate, and it's just like I'm feeling really old with these graduations, but congratulations to all of them, it's pretty exciting, and good luck as you move on to your next part of your life. Also, wanted to mention, get out to vote, it is June 13th. There are actually three referendums questions, there is our local budget, of course, that I hope you do vote in favor of. It is a well-thought-out and a very worthwhile investment plan. I did want to mention and say thank you to Councilor Hayes, and also to the Finance Chair for the School Board, Jody Shea, for the very nice letter to the editor explaining the process and the collaboration that occurred. I really do appreciate the tone and the context in which that was written, and think that it was truly representative of our community and the work that we've done, so I want to say thank you, Peter, very, very much. Did want to mention that on the 13th at polls, the poll, there is only one poll, it is actually at Town Hall, and Town Hall opens up at 7:00 and will close at 8:00 PM. Also wanted to mention, the other two items, I'm not really going to focus on the state, because I don't really recall what that was about, it was about basically infrastructure and investment, I think it was $50 million bonds, but there is the fuel station referendum question, asking voter approval for bonding for the replacement of a fuel station fuselage tank that's underground. It's very, very important, I do hope that the citizens pass that, so that we can resolve that problem before it becomes a bigger problem with EPA or DEPA or any state agency, so do please vote in favor of that as well. Also wanted to mention, sorry, I hit something else, I'm really excited about the Main Family Business Award they mentioned, Bill, that family I've known for about 20 years, they're absolutely incredible story, they started with-
It started with Joe's grandfather, Frank Gutter, who passed the business down to his daughter, Linda Gutter, and then Joe and his wife took that over. So it shows that small business agriculture can still flourish in Scarborough, in a fairly high-tensity area over in the Highland Avenue segment. So, and if you go in there, it's just, I remember when all they sold were basically plants, replantable plants and Christmas trees, and now they have this wonderful, small little store that includes homemade baked goods and all kinds of stuff. And so, and a lot of that was really Joe and Christine that really took it to that level. So that is truly, truly exciting for them. And last, I wanted to, first, I really wanted to say thank you to the Communications Committee for the continued work. I get, I do get feedback around those public sessions that you have and how successful they are. And I do want you to know, I choose not to attend purposely, because I think that it gives one, the opportunity for the committee members to really be the leaders within that particular group, because that's what we've charged that group for. Sometimes when you have too many counselors in a room, it can make things more complicated, so I try to be respectful of that. Working out of town also doesn't necessarily help getting here early. But I do want to say thank you, because it is working, and I think that this has been a very good start. I do want to mention that my door is always open. I publish my personal cellphone. That was the one condition my wife said when I ran for reelection, that no one was supposed to call the house. Been very good so far, so my cellphone is published, you're always welcome to call. And the reason why I mention that is that in the past week and a half, I have gone to three different neighborhood sit-downs and coffees to talk about the budget and about the communications that's coming, that's going on around it, and particularly around the signs. And I think that without characterizing anyone, I look at the signs for what is the intent of the message that's being said on that sign. And I think it's extremely clear that some of those signs are purposely misleading, and that's because they're taking advantage of a very hostile community, or hostile moment in which people are very upset with government across the board, up to the federal level, including taxes. So I'm really appreciative of those that do reach out, and I'm able to sit down and talk to them, to explain to them exactly what is going on, because it is not what is being presented on those signs, and it's not what's being presented in some of their communications on social media. So I know that all of you, as well as myself, are always open for a conversation around that, and so anyone is welcome to give me a call. And with that, I would have a motion to adjourn.
So much.
All in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you.